Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the county meeting to order. Please stand for the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads, please. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, we are again humbled and we are small in your presence, Lord. Lord, we are here tonight with these beings and His day and seeking guidance and leadership and wisdom. Lord, we ask that you'll be over this governing body tonight as they look and address the issues of the town of Tassau. We ask that you'll give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are not only in the best interest of our community, but also in your eyes. We ask that you'll give everybody safe travels back to their homes and we will give all the thanks to you. We ask all this in your name we pray.
First, I'd like to start with probably my favorite part of the job and that's recognizing the young people that are in our town, community. So if I could get the eighth grade girls' basketball team to come up with the coaches?
Alright, girl, eighth grade, come on.
Middle school. Alright, middle school. This is eighth grade.
You gotta kinda increase that. Think that way, the mayor would be...
Both things, ladies and gentlemen, bring one. That's what we're asking for, speech, something like we have.
You will do both at the same time?
Well, I was gonna do eighth grade first, but everybody came up.
Well, you...
Middle school. Is that everybody? Is everybody, all the girls up here?
So you're doing one at a time?
Okay. So, I want to present this to the coaches. Whereas the 2018-2019 Tassau Middle School eighth grade girls' basketball team and the JV, Tassau High School JV basketball team of Tassau, Virginia, experienced an outstanding 2018-2019 year. And whereas the TMS eighth grade girls' basketball team led by Coach Derek Pridgen and Coach Whitney Saunders completed the 2018-2019 year with an undefeated season. And whereas the TMS eighth grade girls' basketball team performed with exceptional teamwork to remain undefeated and did so with exemplary behavior reflecting on all fans, students, administration, and staff of the Tassau Middle School Bulldogs. Now therefore it be resolved, I, Michael Lephoops, Mayor of the town of Tassau, Virginia, with the citizens concurring do hereby command and congratulate the TMS eighth grade girls' basketball team for a job well done and best wishes for continued success in the future. Adopted this nineteenth day of March, 2019. Thank you, guys and ladies.
Hey, Mayor, I might want to point out too that the JV girls won the district championship, is that correct? Middle school went undefeated and the JV girls won the district championship. So, yeah, two different teams, but they're all one, they all play together, big family side.
That's right. Let's give them another round of applause.
Now each one of you have to give a speech.
She called. Alright, next on the agenda is a presentation by Derek Mays for the Police Department Accreditation Award.
I'm not used to hearing a room full of people on the street. I am really losing my touch with this job. Good evening, everybody. I am Derek Mays from the Department of Criminal Justice Services out of Richmond, Virginia. And myself and Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commissioner Chief Ricky Oliver with the Bureau of Police Department, we are here tonight to present the Tassau Police Department with their accreditation award. Being a part of accreditation is a very strong thing. Tassau, I know these guys know. I've been a Razzabah. I've still been a Razzabah. And, uh, yeah. Y'all know, right? Okay. So, but it's an honor to be a Razzabah, such a fine group of people. And the best part about my job is sometimes you can build a working relationship and then sometimes you go to work relationship and develop into friends. And that's what I have here in Tassau, is a bunch of friends. So it's a great honor to be here for this. But before I say too much, I'm gonna let the chief off.
That's a first. When this came up and we knew that Tassau was going to be receiving their accreditation, I begged Derek, I want to be the commission that makes, helps make the presentation in front of you guys. Because as an assessor, I cut my teeth on Tassau. I was the team leader for one of their assessments and then I come back four years later and did their assessment again. I've been here for many months and, you know, greatest hospitality in the world, thanks to Florida. They can't do, we know that he feels as a chief, but chief's a boss.
That's wrong.
And I want to say this about the accreditation process. It's not an easy process to obtain. Just the mere amount of proofs that you have to make available and be aware of and make sure that you show it into files and folders and your daily work and with the, making sure the officers adhere to it. There are 190 standards. And on top of those 190 standards, they are further broken down into 555 bullets. That's just for one year. And Tassau was able to do that times four years. And stay on top of everything that they did. So, and Mr. Mays also has a letter that he would like to read to you. I'm gonna let him read that now.
Chief, come on, please. This letter is from the Director of the Department of Criminal Justice Services. She could not be here tonight, but she is going to address Tassau Police Department with their accomplishment. March 5th, 2019, Tassau County Police Department, attention Chief David Mills. Dear Chief Mills, the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services would like to congratulate you and the town of Tassau Police Department for your successful assessment to become Virginia Law Enforcement Standard Commission's Accredited Law Enforcement Agency. Becoming an accredited agency is a milestone event. Maintaining the 190 standards that cover over 700 areas of compliance can be a very daunting task. The town of Tassau Police Department met those standards and stands as a beacon, and they truly do. They stand as a beacon for other law enforcement agencies in southwest Virginia that seek to achieve this status. We at the Department of Criminal Justice Services thank you for your dedication to the accreditation process and look forward to working with our relationship in the future. Signed, Shannon Dion, Director of the Department of Criminal Justice Services of Virginia. Chief, this is for you, just one. Thank you, sir. We got a little bit more. And again, I want to thank all for having me here, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna read the plaque to you and then I'm gonna present it to the chief. This says, "The certificate of accreditation, this document certifies that the Tassau Police Department came under the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission on January 24th, 2019, and it has admitted requirements set forth by the commission and is therefore certified as an accredited agency." Chief.
Susan, I'll get him to turn your way. If you can turn around and face... There you go.
Can I get Sean and Stan to come up?
Can we do one in front of you? You all standing there? Would that be okay?
Of course, Laura, come up here.
Yeah, that gets a boss in there.
You've been chief of, you've been chief of Sean. Before we open up the outside.
One other thing I would like to mention, ladies and gentlemen, when I came here is that Sean was the original accreditation manager and it's so good to see that he's come back to do that.
Good job, Chief. Great luck. Thank you, Chief. Set a bar and you got it.
I just want to say, I really did appreciate Derek and Chief coming down and presenting this award and allowing them to come down after all we've endured. And I really am proud of our department for stepping up and making this happen. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a discussion of the 2020 census by Ms. Peggy Curley.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Peggy Curley and I am with the Department of Commerce, the Fifth Bureau Division. And I am here today to talk to you about the census. We have been calling about from town to town and meeting with mayors and asking to present to you all to discuss creating what is called a complete council committee. So I have a presentation, I'll share some information with you if you feel a little overwhelmed. I've been providing with some documents that have some of the information in it that I will be talking to you about. If you have any questions, it's not me, I'm talking about. I'm sure as most of you know that 2020 census is a U.S. Constitution mandated Article 1, Section 2. The information is to use to help a fortune seize in U.S. House of Representatives. It, the information is used to conduct redistricting of the federal, state, and local levels. And most importantly, this information will be used to help distribute $775 billion throughout the state, so local and state governments. To break this number down, to kind of show you right here, okay, on the ground, what that looks like, in the state of Virginia, Tennessee, if 1% of Tennesseeans did not participate in the census, you're looking at about $16 million. That averages about $1,091 per person for a year for a senior period. On page 14 in the book that I gave you is a list of 50 different ways that these funds are used. The statistical information from the census is used to help decide how much of this funding goes where and what it's used on. So that'll kind of be something to relate back to. The information is used to help officials listed there, help plan for what communities will be flowing toward in the future, such as our schools, our roads, bringing in new businesses, things like that. The 2020 census goal is to count everyone once, only once, and know the right place. So it's real important that, you know, we count everyone everywhere. Our objective is to conduct the 2020 census with the same high quality as the 2010 census. There will be some new things that will take place this census though. We have been maximizing our outreach and you can vote for additional and new media. So that is something new you will see. We're offering and encouraging people to use a secure online response option. This is the first time the census has been, will be conducted online. There will be an online telephone and a paper option to complete, but we are encouraging everyone that can to go online to complete the census. We're also providing our field workers with handheld devices for collecting census data information. So some of our workers are going out and will have iPads and some of them will have iPhones. So whenever they're conducting a commemoration, they will actually be able to just put this information in instead of it being on paper. And we are utilizing automated systems for our recruiting training and paper purposes. So everything is kind of going online, but it has been easier. And this just kind of gives you a timeline of where we're at in the process. From now through October of 2019, we are working on the infield address canvassing. We are currently recruiting for address canvassing folks. We were looking to at least hire 30 to 40 people in the area. So we are interested in, if you all have, job fair opportunities, see where we can get this information out. What we would like to do is hire locally, hire local faces, someone that go around and they're talking to your makers and your friends in your community about providing their information to the government. These are trusted faces and voices here in your community. In February of 2020, we will start our group quarters campaign. This will be our prisons, our jails, nursing homes, different facilities and that. So some of the folks that come on in the address canvassing hiring could have an opportunity to continue to learn different projects throughout the census. So, you know, we're trying to think smart and utilize these folks for the training that they have. April 1st, 2020 is actually census day. That, you know, we're really, that will be the day we're really trying to motivate everyone to complete the census, complete your census. However, the internet's up response, we'll start in March 2020. So they will have a good window there to be able to complete the 2020 census. The online response will run through July 2020. And then at that point, that is whenever we will update the information and look at who's responded and where they've responded at and where more help is needed. And then that is where generators will go around through Georgia and start counting folks. And that'll pick up in April 2020 and then it will run through July 2020. So that just kind of gives you a timeline for what the census will look like this time. Listed here is jobs that we are posting, are posting in the USAjobs.gov website as well as the 2020 census jobs link. You will see all of these jobs posted there, all the way down from, you have the area census officer manager, all the way down to the recruiting manager. Those are local office positions. Even though they'll be servicing out in the field, our local office is in remote. But whenever you look down below that, recruiting assistant down, we will be hiring those people here locally. There's going to be 13 managers positions in the local office that will be covering the area. Recruitment has, you know, already started, so we're already doing that. We want to go ahead and hire as many as we can for the address canvassing. We have a lot of work to do. I'm speaking with a mayor here and you all did participate in with the, with the address canvassing, correct?
We did.
So somewhat ahead, still a lot of work to do. These folks, from what I've been told, the address canvassing positions, everyone's working to, so we're kind of a lot of time, so, you know, just really getting all of those efforts to get people to apply. Everyone who applies, they'll have to apply online and that's the website and we're going to do so. If they need assistance, there's an HFF member there that can offer assistance. And these positions pay really well. If you look at the screen or look anywhere from about $13.50 to $19.00 an hour for the local jobs out in the field and the need of office positions, they go from $19.00 to $25.50 an hour. What I'm here today for and really need your help with is I created what is called a complete council committee, okay? What the complete council committee will do is they will encourage your residents to respond to the 2020 census. This will consist of government and community leaders, view of census, media, education, healthcare, and other community organizations. If you look on page 11, there is an example in the book of what a committee would look like. However, we want to create a committee in your area that will be effective for your area. So it doesn't have to look just like that one, but the standards isn't that they're all going to look like. What the committee would do is they would develop and get out a simple message that the 2020 census is coming. This will be your awareness campaign for your community. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get citizens to, to familiar, be educated with what the census is and why it's important to do the census. Okay, with the positions that we will be providing, the complete council committees, they will really be encouraging the communities, the folks that are out in the field, they will be collecting your information for addresses. So once we actually created a committee and not focused on what areas need the most work in your community, then we can go back to the census and say, you know, hey, we've done this work, what's this looking like? And the census can come back and say, okay, this is work in here, now we need to move on into here. These workers will be able to keep the addresses updated so we can make sure that we're getting the right targets. So the committee stays focused on what we need to do in each category to be effective. There is three steps that the committee will help with. And the first step is the education phase. And that's going to run through September, October, and October. And that's basically the committee coming together, figuring out who it is that you need to be on your committee. And then this committee will start educating the communities in these certain groups. After September, October, and October, then we'll move on to the motivational phase. And this is where we're trying to motivate people in the community to complete the census. And then the motivation and action phase. And that will run through June of 2020. And that's just where we're trying to get everyone counted, we're trying to still get out there, set up opportunities for folks to get out there to complete the census. Again, this is kind of a layout that you see on page 11 and what a committee is made up of. Again, this is only an example. A committee can have whoever, you know, the found things that would be beneficial to get the job done, get everyone counted. Okay, now this talks a little bit about how local governments can collaborate with the U.S. Census Bureau. And these are just a few of our needs that, that we can also have for. Just operational support, if you have space that can be used for testing, ordering, or training after we hire folks, we're looking for those types of things. These spaces, if they consisted of computers, could be at your libraries, your school, if you had a resource center here locally. If those spaces are available, if we just knew about those, that would be a big help. Provide at least a residential institution, so if you know a group quarters that are here locally, if you would inform us of those, we can ensure that they are counted. Provide a list of shelters, service providers, and transit locations. That's just so we can put out some flyers, give some information there, make sure that everyone is seeing the information on the census and that they understand. Under the census, this information will provide easy to read materials, we need to make sure we get those. If you could promote temporary job opportunities, again, if someone's coming in doing the address canvassing, you know, they could be, they're not supposed to be put back into the following end and taking part in other projects. So this could go on throughout the census if they're selected. Well, sleep's off, I think it's time to sleep. Just the promotion, supports, you know, just getting the committees together, really getting your members of the community so they understand, you know, we go all year round and we tell folks, don't get your information out, don't get your information out. And now we're setting up to them and saying, oh, the government will not allow any regulation. So we just want them to know that it is easy, it is safe, and that it's important. And that is the message that we're trying to get out. And that will be the primary focus of what this committee would do. If you have any more questions, again, I'll let you whip the book, but if you have questions outside that, please contact me and we'll know you're doing anything else you can do to help you out.
I still want to mention that it's confidential for 72 years.
Absolutely.
It says it right there.
Yeah, it's a lifetime. When we are hired as employees, we take an oath and under this oath, we are promising not to share any information with anyone, not, not when we're an employee and not after we're an employee. There is a five-year prison term in there and a $250,000 fine if we do. The census data information is not shared with anyone, it's not shared with us, it's not shared with the ADR, it's not shared with anyone. We do not share any information. What's calculated is really only statistical information.
Well, I think when you're getting it, you need to stress that it's confidential for 72 years.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and that's very important. If you have any other questions, please let me know, I'd be glad to answer them. You all have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is the presentation of a donation for the mural and for the Tassau County train station. So first you have something to read, you want to read first and then we pull this out?
Put the cart before the horse.
Stephen, I'm Michael Lephoops, the Past Penning Historical Society, and we're pleased to present a check for $15,000 to be used with Tassau Train Station mural. The planned mural, mural of Tassau through the eyes of Louise Leslie is near and dear to our heart as Louise is one of the founding members and memorialized Tassau in her many writings. Tassau County Historical Society received a grant from the Delston Foundation and we are contributing all grant monies received to this wonderful project. We look forward to attending the grand opening ceremony in May to see the restored depot and mural. And we'd like to thank Tassau, town Tassau there, to write a new chapter in the life of the train station.
Thank you. Next, we have Alexis Fulmer requests street closure of Main Street for the parking table and permission to serve alcohol without approval from the ABCA.
I've got some little bit of information.
Help me understand, print problems.
My name is Alexis Ball, and I am here on behalf of the Tazewell Park and Table event. I will be planning for maybe, if you will, this year's event. I have a few requests this evening, but first I'd like to let everyone know that the 2019 event date is set for September 21st. That is the third Saturday in September. Hope to see everyone there, each and every one. The first request I have is for the use of Main Street on that event date. If you can see on your map, originally, our boundaries were going to be, we've been requesting that they extended all the way down to the end of the front porch and the outer edge of Seven. I corresponded with those businesses and opted to condense that, narrow that space. And if you can see the arrows, that's where I'd like that space to be. So the front porch is business right and then road parking are slightly open and same goes for Seven. The second request I have is for the permission to serve alcohol at that event, same as we've done the past three years. That's, of course, following Virginia ABC protocol, and that will be put to effect. And the final request I have is for the continued support of the town's, their support of our long-term financial goals, which many of you, or some of you, or none of you might know, that that goal is to build a permanent farmer's market structure for the Tazewell Farmer's Market. That goal is still very much in its infancy. And if you could see on your expenditure sheet, the current bank balance, that, the fee charged by the town to reserve Main Street or use Main Street on that date would make a substantial dent, which would further keep us from that angle. So if you don't have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I think the best been one, I've been, it's been outstanding, the attendance has been good. Absolute for safe goal, I mean, yeah.
Change the two eyes, I guess, I think it's fine. I'm all for it.
She need a vote, she get, she get two votes, you have to, number one, the head of the event, vote on that, and number two, the ABC. And she's also number three, you have to weigh the fee, so you do need to address them all three times.
They need to be a separate motion?
Yes.
Well, I'll make the motion that we have allowed upon the table on September 23rd.
It's all in favor.
I'll say that motion. All in favor? I'll vote. Okay.
Okay, proceed.
So...
I'll vote you will serve alcohol.
I'll second it.
All in favor of serving alcohol? So I would like that motion to pass. I'm out with everybody, you see my...
Yes.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
If you got a request, your third request was to weigh the fees.
Make that motion.
I'll say the motion.
All in favor of weighing the fees?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Sean, so again, let's update out of YMCA.
I'm Sean Durham, and I'm the executive director of the Four Seasons YMCA, and that is still a miracle and work right here in Tazewell. And I'm very grateful to be here and be the fourth town council. I like to come back a couple times a year and give you an update. I always like to talk about the good news of the Y, because it truly is still a miracle every day. We are quickly approaching our 10-year anniversary in June. And we could not do that without the continued support of the town and all of its residents. We are truly, truly blessed. I went to Roma a couple weeks ago and toured three lives, and one of them was a brand-new $40 million bike, so yeah. And when we walked out, we got to the car over that hour since I said. So on top of the 10 years, though, I just want to tell you about some of the good news, because it is exciting, 10 years. Whoever thought we had YMCA, the town of Tazewell, quite a great thing. We are closely approaching the 1 million person walking through that hood and scanning in for a workout. And we don't scan everyone that comes in. We had a basketball tournament last weekend, and if you missed that, you really missed out on it. We had a packed house of 350, 400 people on Thursday night and Friday night. None of those folks are counting in that, no. So there's been more than a million people through our stores, but scanning in each day. So we're getting really close, but we're a little afraid to tell folks how close we are, because then we think people are going to start asking us every day. But we'll have a big celebration when that happens. You know, last year, we had over 2,000 classes, exercise classes, hundreds of games for youth and adults going on out there. There's so much more that goes on at the YMCA, and I talked about that the last time I was here. It's not so much people trying to lose weight, people trying to lower their blood pressure. It's about being a part of something bigger than yourself, and that's me, you, and being a part of this community. And we can't do it without the town. We're very fortunate, Mr. Day came out and spoke with our board a few weeks ago, always supportive and encouraging. And you all, you've got a great guy right there leading this town. And also, me and Ben, we get together every once in a while here in the last few weeks and try to do something from the latter to where we can come together and see what we can do there. You know, we employ a lot of folks in the town, a lot of young people. The Y's three main focuses is youth development, and a lot of that youth development is not sports, it is becoming a citizen and being productive. So we employ a lot of kids, and we just recently had a lifeguard class. And you don't think that's a big deal to have, but I'm pretty sure we supply every municipality from Mercer County to Cannon County in lifeguards. And they're able to do that because we have an indoor facility that is top-notch. And so everybody has plenty of lifeguards. We, this Friday, one of our big events coming up is our Scripps Spelling Bee. It's at Southwest Virginia Community College. It's for all the middle school students in Tazewell County. So if you're not doing anything, 6:30 on Friday night, come down and see Tazewell County's bright students compete. It really gives something to see, and the winner gets a trip to Washington, D.C. over the 4th of July to participate in the national spelling bee. And we've had a two-year reigning champion out here, she's not old, she's finally in high school, but here, her brother who got runner-up last year, he's in it again this year. So that family may be going back to D.C. And then the next Friday night, which is the 30th, I believe, we have our first prom. We wanted to focus a little bit more on our seniors. We've got a great demographic of those folks out there. Now, I don't know how we're going to get them back to that late in the evening. And one of the first things we did, because the seniors are our focus, because in our new strategic plan, we set an age limit, and we were immediately contacted by lots of folks, much, much younger. So, you know, I was fortunate, I got to go to two proms and married a girl that I took to both of them. But I found that a lot of people, because of circumstances, everybody had to go to proms. So we've had folks reaching out, very, very young, and said, I never had an octet meeting. I don't know, so we've opened it up to everyone, and I'd like to invite you all to come to that. The other, only big thing that I want to tell you about is this Burke's, Burke's Garden to the Brakes Initiative that's going on. That thing is picking up some speed, and it looks like we're going to eventually get a spur off the Appalachian Trail, which is kind of unheard of, because the AT people don't like to move the trails. But it looks like we're going to be able to get a spur that'll come from Burke's Garden, and it will actually come to the backyard of the YMCA. So we can build a hostel there one day. We do have a bus, one of the requests from someone on the board from both of us was that we become an AT-friendly town, and often that is a shuttle. So it's 11 miles from Burke's Garden to the back of the YMCA. So it's a great day hike, and we'll try to promote that, and of course, promote Tazewell. But we're just very thankful for you all and your support. I'd like to see you at the Y more. If you don't see me, I'm there. 10 years, and I got to thinking, we have a million people through the doors, a lot of long days. I lived there about five years, so I consider myself at least a part-time resident of Tazewell, and you all are always very kind and good to me with the Y, and I appreciate you, thank you much. And I have something for each of you.
Two. You know, I can't get a one mile trail any deeper than that.
Sean, if you don't care, I know it's not the town, but you told the council and everyone here about the good news and what's going on at the college as well.
I'll be glad to, I'm excited about that. I'm sure Dr. Wright's been here and spoke to you all already, right?
He's been.
Well, you guys need to have. New president of the college is Tommy Wright. Please come to the prom. Now, you've been asked to the prom, so don't want to take that for granted. Tommy Wright has brought a lot of energy to the college, and one of the big things that he did was the announcement of the athletic programs, they got eleven, and they're bringing recruits in from everywhere, every day on the ground down there are recruits coming in, not just from the state of Virginia. There were kids there this weekend from Tennessee. So they're going to need housing, they're going to need places to live and those type things. But one of the things that that has brought on, these athletics, is an upgrade of all those facilities down there. We have a wonderful agreement with the college. We provide a management service down there, and we don't pay a whole lot to make the thing. We will pay electric bills and those type things. We're providing a service there for them, so it's a true partnership. But they are upgrading the entire facility. They'll have a brand-new basketball gymnasium floor there. It's probably about a $400,000 project, new scoreboards and all that stuff. But they'll be able to host major high school tournaments, even once these teams move into regional play, they can play in some of the smaller gyms. So they'll be able to host that stuff there. They're also upgrading all of the fitness facilities, which the Y is managing that. We're very, very happy, because I put Band-Aid on everything down there for five years. And it's well overdue, it's 20 years old, 22-year-old building, but lots of excitement down there. Tommy Wright has really been supportive of the Y, he's served on our YMCA board down in Tennessee. So the first time he came into the college, he was a grand hand. It's not, does it? So we're going to get those upgrades, we'll have something really proud to be of, have down there. And nobody realizes how many folks from Tazewell that joined this YMCA come down there and actually get a workout when they're traveling, or when they're going to work, or that type thing. So it's really neat to see, and it's been a great partnership with them, and hopefully we continue it. I want to see y'all at the prom. Now, listen, you don't have to wear any coats, but you can put on you nice as you does and come on out. We're going to have some food and some music and some fellowship and all that, so it's great. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, record tournament update.
All right, so as a guest, I just want to give an update on some activities that are going to be done throughout the summer leading into basically the fall. Obviously, weather permitting, it has always been in our favor. But for ones that are going to be going on going through the summer, so far, we have night swim. Some have been frequently requested by a lot of people, asking, you know, when can we open it up for night swim? We did it one time for after a football game last year, and it was a cold night, but the water was warm. I didn't argue, I thought it was cold, but they loved it, they had a blast, we had a DJ there, and they asked when we were going to have the next one. So we're going to start having those every Monday, Wednesday, all summer until the heat closes, 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And it will be a separate cost and actual day fees. Reason for that is if we keep it open longer, we have to bring in guards for a longer time, and we have to put more chemicals at night. Chemicals bleed out the budget for the pool a lot, and we do have to apply it manually and the sun kind of heats it up throughout the day. So we just thought of a $3 price entrance fee for night swim for two hours, and then putting those completely separate from summer passes and day passes. For another one that I'm excited for, heard a lot of feedback about it, fishing tournaments. At least once a month, starting in June through October, I want to put fishing tournaments up at the park. Nothing extravagant, obviously, we don't have these giant fish swimming out, we do, but not at the amount that has, you know, played the lake or anything. But something to get people out there, just to go out there, you know, come out to the field, or sorry, to the park, the aqua park is there, so it'll drive more people to see. It will not, it shouldn't be an issue. I talked to the game board and chief, and he said the aqua park shouldn't have any impact on it, as long as, obviously, no fishing here, no fishing here. The rules, regulations, I have a big list of that, I know about 45 yards, 45 feet or something like that from each other have to be, and that will be applied to the aqua park as well. So the entrance fee so far, what I have is $50 for boats, if they want to put in their boat, and that's just for one person, or $25 for somebody who wants to cash in the bank and do it. The winner will obviously get the whole thing, we're not trying to make money off it, it's worth it to down and give something for the people to do. So, and basically, we'd also, from the budget, we'd put $100 from the park, add it on to whatever they win. So it'd just be take it all, and again, that'd be every month, every single month, once a month. With the exception of October, I want to hold a two-day one, to where they register first Saturday morning, go from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And depending on how many we have, the top, say, 10, 15, or five, will be invited to come back Sunday for the championship. So they'll have to come back for two days, same way. We have decided, again, we want to do weighing, or just length, probably weighing is just what's the most recommended way to do it. But then again, that would be a little bit more in terms of the entry fee, and then the winner would take that off. And I'm excited for that one, I think that will take off, and that could be something that every year, so we'll be looking forward to it. We can actually put it on the website, get ready, you know, it's coming, it's that time of year again. Some event ideas which will be scattered throughout the summer, based on schedule, whether it's softball, soccer going on. One of them is Taste Hawaii. I went there for my honeymoon, and I absolutely loved the stuff they did.
I did, man.
I had, I don't know. But they had, it's the games they did, but it's such little space. So I would like to do something like that at the pool. So where we bring a DJ, obviously, get wine theme going, get some areas we're saying, put something there for complete pictures, have a bunch of mini games, and then even cater. A big thing in Hawaii, they have a bunch of pork at their luau. Looking into it with the fishers, see if they'll cater for that, and have a giant pork thing there, or, you know, it'd be just a flashy show, again, for all ages, but something that's a night swim. Utilizing the pool and utilizing what a lot of people want to do, which is night swim. Another one which utilizes the pool as well is movies on the water. Obviously, the theme bed will be closed off, we would have lifeguard presence, make sure it stays that way. But we purchased a bunch of flat inflatables, whether it be beds, little booys, or whatever they can sit on and play a movie, turn the lights off, it'll be pitch black, and have a movie playing while they can sit at the pool, while offering different drinks and sessions would be available as well, and just kind of giving them something new to experience. Another big one, which would be more of a summer finisher, I call Fun in the Sun, basically holding inflatables, different, basically a big activity thing throughout the park, just close out the whole, all the fields, leave it open to the public, and just come in and kind of celebrate the end of the summer, you know, having a good summer, hopefully with all those events bringing out good people, and ending it off with some big event for the kids, having inflatables, not inflatables like the water, but, you know, obstacle courses and stuff like that, base painting, egg race, egg carries, egg toss, all that stuff, just different things that kind of seem, I think, that just hit off great, and get all the space to do it at the park. So that, again, that's kind of a summer finisher. So kind of towards September, the weather permitting, maybe in October. Now, a big one is an event that I'm excited for, I've been looking into this a lot, and I think it's something that'll take off, is, I'm not sure if you all have heard of the Spartan races, they're pretty big. Will they do something, it's a, it's called Spartan Track Facta. They have three separate races that have to, they coincide with each other, and they've done three from times of the day, sorry, different times of the year. We're also going to do it through the summer. But I'm in communications with Bluefield Parks and Rec, Virginia and West Virginia, Richlands, and obviously myself, to hold three separate races and kind of have the same concept. Now, when they do this, they're each different races, so they're not all 5Ks. So for example, we did the Mountain Mudder one year, which I intend to bring back this summer, but I'd like to utilize that for more than just one race. If we put that to Richland, I've talked to the directors in both places, have Richland do their own separate 5K, or whatever they want to do, something unique, and then have us do the Mountain Mudder, which is more of a physical demanding obstacle course, and then say Bluefield does something with Mitchell Stadium that they can get, or even Bowman Stadium. or even Bowman Stadium. For baseball, have a stadium obstacle course. Something along the lines of what the Spartans do and getting a medal. So the medal they're doing for Spartan Race, which something's pretty simple, is after they complete each race, they get a third of the medal. So, you know, if they complete the Mountain Mudder, they'll get a third of the medal. And if we can get them customized, having something to represent Tassau. So the Tassau C will be on that medal. Same as if you go to Bluefield, they end up getting that piece of the medal. Once they complete all three, you have all three pieces of the medal. Now, you can wear them all at the same time. Or you just put them all together, they should fit like a puzzle. And I've looked at a bunch of places for that and I'm pretty sure that's possible. Like I said, there's a lot of plans to look into. I haven't decided whether to make it a weekend thing or a three, three-weekend thing or just once a month. Because I'm trying to get people from Bluefield, Richlands, Tassau, travel around, see different parks and get more people talking. And I think this will be something that if it takes off and it's done right, it'll be something I'm very looking forward to every year. Something that people will travel to, kind of get all three pieces of that medal. It's a lot easier than Spartan races in terms of, because Spartan races are by states. They can happen by state certain races. Here, we're just having it in three different locations, three different parks and rec locations. And kind of, you know, just pushing that to people to get to each spot, seeing it at the same time. The Aqua Park will still be running if we do it before fall. But I think this idea will take off. It's been, it sounded a lot of planning. I've been talking, I've been in support from the director of Richlands already and Charles even talked about it from Bluefield. Haven't gotten around to talking to Greg. He hasn't gotten back to me yet. But they would be basically their own, Bluefield, West Virginia, Virginia. We're going for, especially. We have as nice of a Track Facta, a Block Facta, I don't know what's a word. So Track Facta is kind of what we're going for. But yeah, that's kind of a big one that I'm hoping to do by the end of summer. And obviously, the ones we do have one on also are summer soccer. We plan to start advertising for that in April, starting in June. And then once that finishes, after about six weeks, go into softball. Try to bring that back. Didn't take off last year, didn't get enough teams. But I'm gonna try it. I'm gonna try to advertise a little bit more. We did a lot with the Aqua Park advertising, couldn't focus it on softball. So I'm gonna try to advertise a little differently for that. See if you can get something like that to back to Tassau, because I know a lot of people love it. And a lot of other minor ones that I'm still working on. I'll have the exact dates, times, and everything. Probably by the first of April, which is when I want to start advertising and pushing it to everybody so it gives people time to look it up, register, and kind of even call me and kind of get more information about it. But yeah, so hopefully, so my plan is to get all this going and make it a year-round thing where people expect this every single year or summer, especially the summer, for the park.
You're gonna be busy.
Any questions?
What about your fishing day? It's pretty good, Dave.
I was thinking about if we're here taking notes when I was talking about fishing.
So on the fishing tournaments, is it like catfish or bass or have you talked to shoot?
Um, I talked to shoot. I said carp and bass are the best to do with. We have, basically, a shot in May. We'll have a variety of what we have and we don't have in terms of numbers, what we can put in there. And at that point, I can kind of make a better decision on what exactly it is.
When are you going to shop today?
In May. That's what I was saying, May. From May 16th. After we liquidate first, then we'll come to you.
So if either one of them, you're gonna demand the all live survival fish tournament? So no dead fish, all of them turned back to the?
Yeah, it's catch and release. It'll all be catch and release.
So they won't have a weighing and taking?
Well, that's, there's different ways of weighing where you could actually, the technology now, most people just take a picture with people and actually weigh it and they'll keep it and send it to us. So we can have it ready and put it in.
What you could do is weigh the picture when you come in. Oh, man.
There's a lot of room I'm having. So I think a lot of this will take on with the.
Scale, they're gonna scale them.
Yeah.
Pretty good, Dave.
I love the Track Facta. Coach King was here, I forget, a couple of months ago. Talked about having the regionals or districts or something cross-country there this year. So you might want to just get up with him and make sure that's the case, that you don't end up having a fishing tournament the same weekend as.
Yeah.
A bunch of buses.
Yeah. He'll be here in April, by the way, before y'all like. Coach King, good stuff.
He'll be here, won't you? April.
Yeah, I love that Track Facta. We can pull that off this summer, Derek.
Yeah, that's something I kind of saw.
If the Track Facta doesn't get pulled off this summer just because of scheduling, are you still planning on having your mud run?
Yeah. Yeah, I still want to, I just want to incorporate a little more than just the mud run.
Yeah, sure. It's great.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes of February 12, 2019, and the budget work schedule of February 23, 2019.
I disapprove of the minutes where it says we can get out of here till 11:05.
You disapproved of the minutes? You disapproved that we didn't get out of here?
Either way you want it.
So can I get a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
I'm in.
All opposed? All right. Approval of the financial statements and financial report from February 2019.
She'll read.
Second. All in favor?
I'm in.
All opposed? So Ms. Brooks, will you give us an update on the planning commission committee?
Yes, sir. The majority of the discussion centered around those wood furnace rules and the smoke being a bother to everybody. And finally, the, finally, I think it was decided that before anybody gets really fussed at about it, there's gonna be a letter that goes out that just suggests that you follow the directions that came with your furnace, telling you what to burn and what not to burn. And just see if they won't just follow the directions. So, and essentially, that was probably table in it, don't you think? But anyway.
I've got one of those things.
And, and.
It costs a lot, too.
Did you read the directions?
Did you follow the directions? I burned strictly wood.
See, why don't you follow the directions?
Nobody even, nobody didn't give you directions.
Well, anyway, that was a large part of the discussion. And then there was some talk about fixing the lights. The town's fixing the lights, replacing the bulbs. And everybody needs to make sure that they have the proper numbers on their mailboxes. You know, since.
On their house.
On the house. The house numbers.
That's a problem. Working on that.
Well, so you're getting there. You're a good citizen.
Twenty letters today.
Really?
A lot of letters.
Well, you can be fine. Is that not right? Didn't we say?
You could be. I hope we never turn it down.
Yeah. So anyway, so, and let's see. And we'll, we'll be addressing the zoning controversy in April.
It's time to take your letter on the first Tuesday.
But then corrections coming up.
Well, my God. Tell me about this, Dave.
That's it.
Thank you. Eric, if you could give us a friendly word.
I'm up there singing that. I've been excited to hear about a lot of big events coming up in 2019. But there is a big event coming up that's been five years in the working. And that big event is gonna be on May 18th. And that's when our train station depot will be open. And there will be an unveiling also on that day of the mural that has been discussed earlier tonight. We're very excited about that. The train station committee has worked off and on for five years now. Done a lot of work, a lot of donated hours to this community to see this project finished. The planning session for the May 18th event is gonna be at our train station committee meeting on Thursday evening this week at 6:00 at the Tassau County Historical Society. Anyone who would like to come is welcome to. The train station committee members have been emailed and invited to be sure to be there. We will plan our event on May 18th there, Thursday. And I guess that's pretty much where we are at college. Or anything else you know about the May 18th date at this point? Do you let me know if you know anything about Thursday night?
I think you're playing to do and ready to get.
Thank you all. Thank you. So unfinished business, the zoning overlay ordinance?
If you'll recall, at the last meeting, we had some comments about the zoning overlay. I do want to let you know that the planning commission, as of right now, does not wish to make any changes to it. But it will be going back to planning commission again on the 8th of that way, Chris. And they'll also be having, we sent out letters to have another open house at that planning commission meeting. Not a public hearing, you've already accomplished that task. But this is just another, we sent the same address, it's again, another individual letter. So we're encouraging everybody to come out. If you've got any questions, there'll be entire planning commission here along with Chris and obviously Mr. Pyle to be here. So hopefully, that'll address some of the issues that we had at the meeting before. And it'll be coming before canceling again in April. Hopefully, we'll have more clarity there.
Any comment, question? Okay. So next is the approval of engineering services for wastewater treatment, plant upgrade, final design phase services.
Yes, Mayor, if you'll recall, cancel scored three different engineering firms. You have those in your, in your packet. The results of those scored, that scoring was promising and lit. So you've already kind of done the scoring. We just need an open approval from cancel to approve the tonnage and lit for that project. So a second.
All in favor?
I'm in.
All opposed? So next is the Board of Zoning Appeals Appeal update?
Yes, some of the elected officials, if you'll recall, a while back, it's probably been almost a year ago, the town canceled appeal to decision of the Town of Tassau BZA with respect to the rezoning, not rezoning, but the subdivision of a piece of property out of Castle Castle. Just want to let you know that Brad Pitt abstained from that with the conflict. And our law firm is Brad, Rep. It's been moved to.
May 3rd, I believe.
May 3rd. So hopefully, at the June meeting, we'll be able to give you an update on how that is.
Any visiting items?
I don't have any at this time, man.
The new business, the proposed project schedule for updating water line mapping, hydraulic, and leak detection project.
If you don't need to vote on that, just want to kind of put that in there to kind of give you all an update on what's going on so you can keep up with that project. Okay, the donation from trust for the walking trail. If you'll recall, during the unfortunate passing of David Nichols, there was an amount of money that was left to the Town of Tassau for some work to be done in and or around Lincolnshire. I've been in communication for the last couple of weeks with some representatives of that trust. I've talked to Brad. And we will be receiving those funds to add to the trail that's going out through the barn property. We are still waiting on Barnes to reply back to the contract they have. So it's, they're on their plate right now and has been for about three weeks, maybe a month. So we're still waiting to hear from them. I've also, we have also applied for three different, three other grants. And I've talked to one of those funding agencies. And I feel relatively confident that one of those is gonna fund that project. So either way, that project will take off just as soon as Barnes family signs it.
And Chris, what we got?
I think a lot. Long term account.
Okay, next is approved rural development resolution and code of conduct for funding for new police cruiser. Here's yours.
The governing body of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, consists of seven members in a duly called meeting held on the 19th day of March, 2019, in which a quorum was presented, resolved as follows. Be it hereby resolved that the order to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States of America, United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, to provide funding for the purchase of the police vehicle and equipment. The governing body does hereby adopt and abide by all the provisions contained in the agreements, documents, and forms required by the governor to be executed. Be it further resolved that the town manager or mayor of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, be authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, to the above referenced agreements, documents, and forms to execute such other documents, including, but not limited to, debt instruments, security instruments, and/or grant agreements as may be required to obtain the said financial assistance. This resolution is hereby entered into permanent minutes of the meeting of this board. Do I read the certification part? I need it.
That's correct.
Okay. No employee, officer, agent, or owner shall participate in the selection, award, or administration of contracts supported by rural development funds if a conflict, vendors, real or apparent, would be involved. The above contact was approved at this meeting held on. That's just for them, okay. So that's all.
Please, look, I'm, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in.
All opposed? So next, we have the Commonwealth Transportation Board Resolution, recreational access to Tassau Low Lea Recreation Park.
Yeah, just wanted to give the council an update. If you recall, Andy Seacat came before you a number of times over the last century that we've been working on. You know, anytime you go after free money, you gotta have public hearing to go through this process. And by the time you get done, you've spent more money than the grants ever were. We have obtained $250,000 in free money for that project. We've got a local match of $50,000. So total, total $300,000. Project estimated $350,000. But we've got some other funds and local matches that'll offset it. So I just want to let the council know that after, I think, literally, three years that that process is finally coming to a closure with some other complications that we'll talk about later with that project. Congratulations. By the way, that'll fix that entrance coming off of Main Street. Fix the exit, put two lanes back there, plus a sidewalk. Retain the road where it's following in. So it's a good project, need to be done. There's, like I said, there's the complications that we need to talk about later. Just want, just an update.
Thank you. Spring cleanup, month of May?
Just wanted to let the council know that if you've got an objection, your staff has selected, again, the month of May. And we will be advertising it on Facebook and the channel, TV channel, everything for the free cleanup month. We'll advertise how we're gonna do it. It might be, maybe by area, maybe as called in. Unless you've got an objection to that, we'd like the council to approve the month of May.
So move.
Seven.
All in favor?[1692.28]
Aye.
All opposed? If she cares, looks like me it is. Are you getting that super thing from Richmond this year?
Yeah, it'll be here hopefully between April 1st and April 15th. By the way, Michigan Springs coming up.
Okay, next is the set the budget work session date for, April 6th, about 7:00 AM?
You know that April 6th date, that's a Saturday? No, just like the rest of the, I don't know, it's a Saturday. But if y'all want to do it on.
I thought I saw 31st or 30th.
30th of March is when I saw it. Yeah.
I have a conflict on the 6th.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be out of town next weekend.
Okay, so if it's the next.
It'll be too late. So if you want to do it one night during the week.
Is it 30th to basketball tournament in Roma?
Yeah.
I won't be here then. Okay, so two around the 6th and two around 30th.
We could do the 13th. It's pushing, so.
I can't do it.
How many of you can eat in the evenings during the week?
Except Monday, or Monday, or Tuesday, Thursday.
Except for Tuesday and Thursday? I'm good every day, this week and next week. The following.
I think you're right.
Well, we are gonna be able to do it. I can do it as late as y'all show up, I want to do it. Well, I'm just saying, I believe I can explain.
I don't want to do that.
Don't want to do it that late. I'll get past my bedtime. So we can do it at 6:00 PM on, like, 8:00? 6:30?
Yeah.
All right, how about 6:30 on what day, Rich?
You're so close to it.
She couldn't do Monday. She's busy with her stuff.
How about Monday, this coming Monday?
What is it, 25th?
25th, 26th. Let's do, how about 27th?
Good.
How do you? How do you? 27th?
So, Rob, my natural way.
6:30? Yeah, 6:30, good? We'll sit down and revise.
I'll take a note for it. I have the excuses. Can you put a tag in? I go back. So did anybody sign in?
No.
Does anybody here that didn't sign in but has something to discuss?
Open up, can't observe.
Okay, can I get a motion to go to executive session?
As long as it's not before midnight tomorrow.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?